Good morning, everyone. Before we get started, first, everybody silence your cellphones, please. And welcome to the Penile County Board of Supervisors meeting for March 19th, 2025. Before we open up the meeting, I'd like PCSO Chaplin, Joe, is he here? Joe here? There he comes, to do an invocation. And then Supervisor, I'll just go with Rich, will do the pledge for us. So if you'll all stand.
Good morning, Council. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you. On behalf of all who are gathered here today, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs for our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the available to work together in harmony, even where there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city. With this, I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Do you want to join me in the pledge? The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Make sure I'm not violating my own request here. Okay, Supervisor Goodman will not be joining us today, so we hope all is best with him at this point. Due to this glitshling conflict, I am going to move item number 15 to right after the finance report. But we'll get started with item number one, county manager's report.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. In life in general, our goal is to be healthy and happy, fulfilled human beings and people. And we want the same for our workers. And we know that our employees, when they're happy and healthy, they're more productive and more creative and more innovative. And so we have wellness program and health program throughout the county, and we had a wellness fair recently and wanted to show a clip of a video of that event.
This is our second annual wellness event. We've invited employees to come meet with us and our vendors to learn about all the wellness activities we have available to them.
I love the fact you have access to all the vendors and you have a chance to talk one-on-one with them and basically find out what services they offer.
While our employees are taking care of everyone else, we want them to remember to take care of themselves. So we're providing them with information and resources that can connect them to support and services so they are kept healthy and stay a vibrant part of our community.
EAP benefits gives really good counseling resources, and it was good to talk to them to find out some additional details.
Some people come here because they know we're offering information related to skin cancer screening.
Skin cancer. Skin cancer, because it's a good service for everybody and we don't think about it. We live in Arizona, and to have it done so easily, it's a very, very good service.
Then we have others that come in with the offer of free food.
Bunch.
Candy was good. That lady was giving out Kit Kats.
It is rewarding to know that we have a lot of services for our employees. And why it's rewarding is because we know this is challenging work. It is not easy to do the work we do for our community while managing our personal lives. So to let employees know they don't have to do this alone, that matters, because they matter.
Lot of candy, stickers, you know, things the kids love.
I like the stickers the best.
Don't forget to donate blood. The event's coming up soon.
Thank you. That's it, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number two will be updates and current events from our Board of Supervisor members. Rich, do you have anything you want to announce?
So as a new supervisor, first of all, good morning, everybody. Thank you for attending. You know, at first, I thought it wasn't going to be like drinking from a fire hose, but it's worse. It's drinking from a double fire hose. So, you know, I'm former Vice Mayor of the City of Maricopa, and I attend their council meetings. So I've been attending their meetings, Queen Creek's meetings also. You know, as a new supervisor, I want them to know out there in Queen Creek that I'm there for them, same with my whole entire district. So I've been attending their meetings and learning a lot about their issues. Attended the Penile Partnership breakfast last week. It's just been amazing to learn what I've learned over the last, you know, 60 days or whatever the number is. Also attending Coolidge City Council meetings. Again, it's important, these people have been, what I feel, left out along with the City of Maricopa, and I want them to know that I'm going to be there for them. So I've been working hard to make sure that they understand that I'm listening to their needs and wants. Attended a very interesting Thunderbird Farms community meeting on fire, and I can probably thank Jeff for that one. That was a misasserted, I should apologize. So it was a good thing to know and a good thing to learn, and we also had a special meeting about it. So thanks for that. Also went to the Penile County Fair. Very interesting. It's amazing, and it's great to see all the vendors out there, and it was first time I've ever attended it. Again, attending all sorts of breakfasts and meetings with Chamber of Commerce, also meeting with, I went to my first Renaissance Festival. And if you haven't gone to it, it is absolutely amazing. And if you've never been to one, you'll be amazed. It's a little different than what I'm used to, but it was fun seeing all the costumes, the kids dancing, going to shows. It really was, you know, enlightening to see something like that. And again, I also attended last night a Hidden Valley Thunderbird Farms special meeting that they have to talk about stuff that's coming out into that area. And it's fun looking, going there and hearing what they have to say about the growth of the incorporated area. And then tomorrow, I get to do, well, I leave tomorrow, but Friday, I'll be attending the A.DOT meeting, which we'll be talking about something about that on the agenda in just a little bit. So that's all. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. This is McClure. Supervisor McClure, do you have anything?
Thank you, Chairman. Let's see, this Friday and Saturday, Arizona City is going to be, I'll be hosting, but Arizona City is going to be having Public Works Waste Pickup. So you're welcome to bring your stuff out, drop it off, don't drop it in the desert. And so that's Saturday, Sunday, seven to one. It's always well-attended. That's all I got at the moment.
Okay. Sir, do you?
As you know, it's festival season, and every community has them this time of year, with Apache Junction having Lost Dutchman Days, Kearney having Pioneer Days, Queen Creek has Heritage Days. Well, Superior is coming up, and Superior has Apache Leap Days and the Mining Festival, and that is the weekend of March 28th through the 30th. So it gives you another perspective on what that means to this community. Another thing is the county is getting more involved in tourism. We're not the county that a lot of people think we are. And last week, I did an interview with Channel 15, and they're covering most of the tourism that happens in the northern part of the county. And it's actually going to air on Channel 15, 8:30 to 9:30 Friday morning, but a lot of us are working. So if we don't see that, I'm hoping that our public information officer can capture that and get it on the website in some kind of a YouTube video. So look for that. My section was on Peralta Park, but it's covering all the events, one of them being the Renaissance Festival, which, when you set foot in the Renaissance Festival, it's like you're not even in Arizona anymore. They have dirt and grass, you know, and trees, you know? So it's amazing out there. So look for that on Channel 15.
Okay. Thank you. I have a couple of things I want to bring up. One, I will be hosting a town hall for my district on Tax Day, April 15th. So don't bring your taxes, because I can't help you with that, but if you can attend, it'll be between four and six at the Community Rec Center at the City of Casa Grande. So for those that'd like to attend that, we're looking forward to that outing. One other thing I want to touch base on, and I think all of our offices have probably been contacted about where we're going with this code revision. So we put it on a pause, and so the general layout right now is staff and the supervisors are going to work on different entities during the summer. We will not start congregating focus groups until the fall. I know a lot of people travel out of state or on vacations and stuff, so we don't want to try and schedule meetings and stuff for the general public in the summer. We're going to shoot for some stuff in the fall. There'll be more talk about it in the future, but I just want to kind of let everybody know that nothing's going to be happening for several months in that arena. And we look forward to working with the community as we move forward with that project. And outside of that, that's all I have for my district. Any? Everybody good? Okay, we'll move to item number three for discussion and updates from myself and Dana. I can tell you, Dana, you want to go ahead and work your way up here. I have very little to talk about, because this has been what they call crossover week. So we still have a lot of unknowns to legislation, whether it's going to die a death by not being heard in the other house, or what will actually come out. I think April, we'll have a better idea of the survivals of the legislation out there. But anyway, we're working on everything, and I'll let Dana take it from here.
Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, Members of the Board, Dana Lewis, Penile County Recorder. You're correct, today is the 65th day of the 57th Legislature's first regular session. Governor Hobbs has signed the first bill of the year, HB 2688 relating to taxes. She's now one-for-one in terms of one for a sign and one for a veto. The House has passed a few Senate bills out of committee of the whole and will likely vote on them and send them to the governor's office in the next two weeks. Two of them are notable election bills, SB 1040, which is the recall timeline, and SB 1041. The committee agendas for the next week are really light. We're not seeing a heavy agenda for them, and the deadline for most to be heard, two weeks away, March 28th is the last day for those bills to be heard in the second chamber. One of the things we're highly or heavily communicating with ACO, our lobbyists, and with legislators right now is House Bill 2002. This is the heavy lift for precincts and elections, and now we'll be working with the legislature to put dollars to what, if they were to enact that, what that would cost the counties. Stand for questions.
Any questions? I want to emphasize the cost. So much of this legislation that comes down is put upon us without funding, which means we're going to have to ask you guys to fund it or decrease some kind of service or something. So we spent a lot of time on defense, I'll have to say, trying to weed through it. So any questions for Dana this time? I want to go into your item number four.
Chairman Miller, Members of the Board, Dana Lewis, Penile County Recorder, Officer in Charge of Elections. Special election proclamation was made by Governor Hobbs on March 14th due to a vacancy by the death of District 7 Congressman Raul Grajala. Interested parties seeking to fill this seat must file a nomination paper and petitions to the AZ SOS no later than April 14th. That means we are having elections this year, and many. A party's allowed representation on this ballot include the Republican, Democrat, Libertarian, Green, and No Labels, which means 40 different ballot styles, four polling places, one per party, two for fed ballots. 90-day notices will be mailed April 16th. The statutes, because of a special election, don't explicitly say that we must or that we shouldn't. We've decided it is in the best interest of voters of Penile County to receive the 90-day notice. This way, nonpartisan, PND, other voters have the ability to request a partisan ballot style. Additionally, this assists our departments always with voter registration and active early voting list maintenance. Deadlines to file candidate petition challenges will then be April 21st. County Party Chairpersons must submit names of special election board workers to our office no later than May 16th. May 31st will be a busy day in our office. That's when UOCBA ballots must be transmitted, poll worker training will begin, and ballot proofs to candidates and party chairpersons will be sent out. And they have until June 2nd to correct any errors. Deadlines to file as a writing candidate will be June 5th. The internal logic and accuracy test for our department will be June 6th, and a week later, either June 12th or the 13th, the Secretary of State will do their logic and accuracy test with our department. Remember, voter registration deadlines in Arizona are 29 days prior to an election, setting this at June 16th. We would like to encourage the use of servicearizona.com to update your voter registration. June 18th, 27 days prior to the election, early ballots will be mailed. Dropbox boxes located at Eloy Public Health, Arizona City Sheriff Substation, Coolidge, Florence Building E., and Votes, Maricopa and Casa Grande Recorder Satellite Offices will all be open. And then in-person early voting at the Votes facility, the Maricopa and Casa Grande Satellite Offices will begin on the 18th and then will end on July 11th. Deadlines to request an early ballot by mail is July 7th, and we have 48 hours to mail. Election day is July 15th for this special election. Last day to cure the early ballot signatures and provide ID for conditional provisionalals will be July 20th. Last day to process the early unprovisional ballots is July 22nd. The Board of Supervisors, we're requesting to canvass July 23rd, and this then submits the information to the Arizona Secretary of State for their canvass July 31st. This is where I would like to point out to the masses that Penile County CD7 has 4,337 voters within the four precincts, 38 Casa Grounds Southwest, 53, which is Chuchu, 67 Hidden Valley, and 91 Silver Bell. Set to receive ballots by mail are 2,457 voters. That will mean we will have four precinct-based voting locations at Cavalry Chapel, Central Lutheran Church, Chuchu Elder Center, and the Hidden Valley Public Work Gardens. We've already started contacting these facilities, reaching out to historical poll workers, updating our poll worker training, and since Friday, we haven't stopped. We've worked through a lot of the weekend to put all of these timelines together for the Board of Supervisors meeting today. We'll be submitting numbers to the Secretary of State today to request reimbursement for projected costs incurred because of this special election. I know this is a lot of information, and I know that I tend to speak fast. So please know that you are able to go to the Penile County Elections website or Votes website, and this should be posted hopefully by the end of the day. Like has stated during the last MOU update, the EPM updates were submitted to the Secretary of State's office yesterday, and we will have our meeting going over those changes and requests on the 25th. We did an electronic adjudication information session, and that video should be posted by the end of the week for those wanting to understand what electronic adjudication is. And then the reprecincting workshop, work session that we held with you will also be continuing to put all of that information together to present to you guys at a later date. I can stand for questions.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Ms. Lewis, I'm glad you pointed out that it's not the entire county that's going to be getting ballots, because I can hear the phone calls coming now. I didn't get my ballot. Where's my ballot? Please look on the map to see where CD7 goes. Mostly the bottom of the state, up the side of our county, and up into Maricopa County, into Phoenix. It's quite large.
Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, I think that's really important to point out. We have about 311,000 voters in Penile County, and when we have just over 4,000 affected by this special election, I don't ever want to say that any voter, you know, it's just a drop in the bucket, but that's a tiny percentage in our county. But here's the thing, the Elections Department of Penile County still pulls out all the stops, and we go full throttle on any type of an election.
Thank you.
I think it's fantastic, Dana, that you already are trying to secure all those location, voting locations and what have you. So any other questions for Dana? Thank you. And I want to take the chairman's prerogative. I forgot, and I should have said something at the very beginning of this meeting of the passing of our Representative Grajala, Representative Grajala. Anybody that serves in an elected position knows it's challenging at best. From time to time, it's a burden on your families and your lifestyle, and he served his constituents well, and I wish peace to all his family and members in the future. He served his constituents very well, and I think that that needed to be recognized. And so I publicly thank him for the service that he did put in for the state of Arizona. Okay, we'll move on to item number five. Presentations. Leo.
Thank you, Chairman. We have seven employees that we get to honor today. We'll start with Amanda Gill, who's been here for 20 years and is a probation division manager. I believe John Fury is here. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. I'm John Fury, Chief Probation Officer. Thank you for allowing us the time to recognize Amanda here today. Amanda started her career with Penile County in victim services as a victim advocate. Two years later, she transferred to adult probation. She rose the ranks with our department, starting as a probation officer, became a lead officer, a supervisor, and she's currently a division manager. You know, when I, when we started together, we were in the same office. I was appeal for six months before Amanda, and a lot of us worried about would Amanda make it in this job. She was often depressed to find that people lied to her, being in the role of a probation officer. I will say Amanda has toughened up, but she's never lost that desire to care for people, help people. She's just a true advocate, and I care about her so much. I don't want to get emotional up here. I tend to talk about her. But she makes me better, she makes our department better, and she truly makes Penile County better. I really hope we can get her to agree for another 10 years to be here. So let's see, can we get you to commit?
I have a different commitment with my husband and retirement, but I would just like to thank the Board for recognizing me today for my 20 years with the county. It's been a tremendous honor working for Penile County and an honor to work for adult probation and to work with this guy. He was there my first day I started, and he's still with us as our chief, and he's a tremendous chief, leading us in a great new direction to help promote positive change with our probationers and keep Penile County safer. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Amanda. Kevin, do you want individual shots or are we just going to take a group shot? Kevin? A group shot, okay. I'll go with that at the end. Don't leave.
For all the awardees, yeah, stick around. There'll be a big group photo at the end. Next, we have Rosario Andrade, and Sessor Wolf is here.
Morning, Members of the Board, Members of the public. Rosario has one of the toughest jobs in Penile County. She's the front line of our customer service people, so she answers the phone from people calling saying, "Why are you taxing me so much?" And of course, we say, "No, we're the assessors' office." We just do valuation, so she's probably been saying that for 20 years now. But she's always pleasant, patient, and people come away saying, "I had a great experience with your office," and Rosario is one of our top people doing that. All of them are good. Rosario probably has more patience than most. So I want to congratulate her on her years of service, and she's taught me a lot. So thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Just thank you.
Do you have your 20-minute speech ready?
I just want to say thank you to everybody. Everybody's been great.
Okay.
And stay around for the group picture.
Okay. Thank you.
Next.
Next, we have Odette Apodaca. She's been with us 30 years, Deputy Chief Clerk and believed clerk of the Superior Court. Ms. Pedia is here.
Good morning, Members of the Board. My name's Rebecca Pedia. I'm the clerk of the Superior Court for Penile County, and I'm honored to be here today to celebrate my chief deputy, Odette Apodaca. For her 30 years of devoted service to Penile County, Odette has dedicated her professional life and career to the Superior Court Clerk's Office, and we are truly grateful for that commitment that she's given to us over the course of three decades. She's always displayed just a strong dedication to her job and to any position that she has ever served in. Her depth of knowledge is just unimaginable. Her expertise is just, it's just impressive, and it's just truly remarkable. Despite holding the position as our chief deputy, she's always willing to pitch in wherever she's needed, whether it's assisting a different department or supporting our staff or our management team or helping our court customers. She is, nothing is ever beneath her. She is always willing to step in and help whoever she can. She constantly and consistently goes above and beyond to ensure everyone's needs are met and our customers' expectations are always exceeded. Odette has served as a role model and a mentor in our clerk's office for many years, and she's had such a positive impact on our employees' lives and mine personally as well. And she's been such a positive influence on our staff, but as me. I have worked with Odette for the last 29 years in the clerk's office, and she has been my mentor, and I'm very, I'm very grateful for her mentorship that she's given me, and I wouldn't be here as clerk without her. I hope that she's proud of her accomplishments and the impact that she's had on our courts and the art organization. So today, I want to offer her my heartfelt congratulations to you, Odette, for reaching such an incredible milestone. I thank you for everything that you have done, for everything you continue to do, and on behalf of the Clerk of the Superior Court's Office, we are forever grateful for the 30 years that you have dedicated to the courts. You're truly one of a kind, and you are just, you're just so exceptional, and I just want to say congratulations today.
I will be quick. I just want to do a quick thank you, especially to Rebecca, but to the board members, the current board members, past board members, all of county leadership. Your commitment and efforts that you do for the employees throughout the years is greatly appreciated. It makes Penile County a great place to work, and I appreciate all you do for your employees. So thank you.
Thank you.
He's been with us 20 years and is a lead plans examiner. I believe Mr. Billingsley and Mr. Allen are here? Oh, and Mr. Ortiz, good morning.
We got the whole team today. Good afternoon or good morning. Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, Board of Supervisors, Joe Ortiz, Development Services Managing Director. I'll keep it short, sweet, and turn a lot of my time over to the other fellows that have been down in the trenches with Ron all over these 20 years. I myself have been in contact with Ron over the 20 years, but in the last year and a half, have really been down in the trenches and really got a flavor for this guy. He's one of those model employees, one of those guys, hey, look, he's super flexible, but he's super intelligent in what he does. He's been doing it, like I said, as a plans examiner for all these years. He's been doing it, like I said, as a Plans Examiner for all these years, so he knows the ins and outs. And not only that, from the technical side, but he's, like I said, one of those model employees that you can throw him curveballs and he'll still knock it out of the park, because in our world, we get plenty of curveballs, and that's what I really appreciate about Ron. It's never a pushback, it's always a, "Yeah, let's, let's see what we can do." And Ron, it's a privilege, thank you, and I want to publicly announce that he's going to be retiring here shortly, hopefully not too soon, but I think in, in April, but I'd publicly want to say, "Hey, thank you, and if you ever get bored, you know where you can always find a home." Thank you. I'll turn it over to Brett and Mr. Allen.
Board members, Members of the public. Anybody who knows Ron, has worked with Ron, knows the quality of an employee that he represents, and that's even further shown in terms of who Ron is a person. So, I wanted to take kind of a personal approach to say in a few words about Ron. Ron was born in Colorado, was an Army brat, but he's lived most of his life in Arizona. When his dad got out of the military, he went to work for Magna Copper in San Manuel, and Ron still lives in San Manuel as of today. He's a U.S. Navy veteran. Thank you for your service, Ron. He retired as an E-5 Petty Officer Second Class from the U.S. Navy. He then went on to get a degree in drafting, and he's most proud that he was able to work on the Biosphere 2 project in Pinal County, as well as the Karchner Caverns project down in the southern part of the state. He was initially hired by Pinal County as a building inspector, but very quickly, the department found out how skilled Ron was, and so they promoted him to a Plans Examiner, and now he is and has been for quite some time, our Lead Plans Examiner for Community Development. One of the things that is absolutely exemplary about Ron is he has trained many, many employees in, in the department over the years. Can't really even put a number on how many folks Ron has, has trained, including Jimmy. So, I, I think that's, that's important to talk about, and there's another one that is even more poignant to me. It's a little-known fact, there's probably three people that know this currently working for the county, but Ron actually sets aside time every Sunday to help employees that are interested in studying for the ICC tests, for their certifications. There aren't many employees that you can see or say that, that have done that and done it for a number of years. According to Ron, his proudest moments are helping customers navigate the code requirements for, for their small projects or the first projects that they've ever done, as well as assisting the Oracle Community Garden in, in getting started. As Joe said earlier, it's, it's going to be a sad day, but Ron retires on April 24th of this year, and he will be deeply missed by many. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Vice Chairman, Board. Jim Allen, a billing official and fire marshal. I have actually had the enjoyment of working with Ron for probably about 18 years. My career started with Pinal County as an inspector. Mr. Delzer was on the hiring board at the time when I was applying for the job, so he actually gave me the opportunity to, to be part of this, and has been a mentor in the time I've worked with him. He's been a great friend and a great asset to the county. I, I think, as Joe mentioned, he's a model employee. It's going to be a bad day when he leaves, because it'll leave quite a void. He's got a lot of experience, knowledge that is, it's certainly replaceable, but had a long time in order to get there. But he's a, he's a great employee, and he's going to be missed, and I appreciate what he's done for us.
I just want to give you a, a thank you for this award. It's been a long road, a lot of good times, a few bad times, but that's life, and you roll with the punches, and again, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Next, we have Hector Vizcaino. He's a custodial worker who's been with us for 25 years. I don't think he's here today, but thank you, Hector, for your service and congratulations. Next, we have Carol Loughlin, who's been with us 25 years and is a probation officer in juvenile court services. I don't think Ms. Loughlin is here either, so thank you, Carol, for your service and congratulations. And last but not least, we have Philip Ortega, who's been with our Pinal County Sheriff's Office for 25 years and is a detention aide. Is Mr. Ortega here? And Mr. Rushing?
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and the members of the Board. Captain Darren Rush, Pinal County Sheriff's Office. When it comes to Mr. Ortega, 25 years is a long time. I've known him, knew him when he first started, valuable employee, trainer, mentor, leader amongst other employees, regardless of ranks or titles. 25 years is a long time. Again, a valuable asset. We've gotten, the county's gotten a very good return on its investment in this employee, and after all this time, I just want to congratulate him on the milestone and personally thank him.
Supervisors, I'd just like to echo what Captain Rush said and also say that if you walked into the jail right now and talked to any of his coworkers, they'd all tell you he's their favorite person to work with, and he's been doing that for 25 years, that's absolutely amazing. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody. For 25 years I got, I got five more years, so once the five more is done, then I'll be good, but. Other than that, I just want to thank everybody.
Hey, are we ready? Is that it, Leo?
Yeah, that's it for this agenda item, the big group photo.
Do you want to get a group photo? Kevin? Where's Kevin? Here he comes. I see him with his light. Okay. Board? I think they'll move this in a little bit, Rosario, I think. It's going to be kind of a big crowd. Okay. And looking up here, big smiles, three, two. We're going to do it again and give the lighter a chance to charge out. Okay, big smiles, like you mean it this time. Three, two, one. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't move. Presentation and acknowledgment of the Civil Deputy County Attorney, Chris Keller. Chris has been an asset the whole 12-plus years that I've been here. He's, he's, it was wonderful to have him come on board. He's taught me a lot, and he's given me great guidance as we've gone through numerous scenarios with the county. I don't know, most people don't realize, we get well over 300 lawsuits a year, and, but we're able to navigate all of them because of the leadership from Chris Keller and, and his team that he assembled here, so I thank him a lot. Leo, I'm going to hand it off to you, I think you have something else you want to take from here?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. This is a, a special one, I think, to, to me and to the county, and so I wrote a few words and then have a few pictures, and if I can get a little nostalgic with you, hopefully you can relate. When I think about Chris Keller, I think about the Showtime Lakers. In any successful team, each member plays a critical role, and they wouldn't be the same without any one of them. With Magic running the point, Kareem's unblockable skyhook, James Worthy's finishing a fast-break dunk, Byron Scott hitting a timely three, and Michael Cooper shutting down the opposing team with this stifling defense, they won multiple championships. Chris Keller is one of our starting five, and we've accomplished so many things over the past 12 years together. Although not always seen, Chris was a difference-maker, and without him, many of these accomplishments would not have happened. In a growing county, we are often creating new things and services that have never existed. Sometimes attorneys can get a bad rap or be the punchline of a joke. We wish things were simple and black and white, but we know that life is more complicated than that, and that decisions take judgment, which is why we have judges and lawyers. Chris was able to help us determine what is legally mandated for the county to do, what we are allowed to do, and how we can do them in a legally defensible manner. He would help us assess the level of risk compared to the level of benefit that we would be willing to accept, and help us design legal solutions to accomplish our goals. This has been essential in effectuating whether some things actually got done or don't happen at all. One of the most meaningful aspects of anyone's career is measured by what positive impacts you've made to other human beings and society as a whole. I thank Chris for both the positive impacts he directly made and for also empowering me and his teammates to do the same, and therefore gifting us to have meaningful and fulfilling careers as well. Chris is a true Pinal County champion, and if we had a Hall of Fame, he would be an inductee. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman McClure, Members of the Board, Gina Godbier, Chief Deputy for the Pinal County Attorney's Office. Thank you for recognizing Chris Keller today, and I wanted to share a few other things about Chris. Chris has practiced for over 41 years. Do you know, he has a bar license in three states, for Michigan, Ohio, and Arizona. He spent 18 years with the Maricopa County Attorney's Office, where I had the privilege of working with him early on in my career, and I want to just say some of the highlights well at the Maricopa County Attorney's Office. Chris was instrumental in bringing in Bank One Ballpark. He also did the transactional deals that brought in many of the Cactus League ballparks, and it's fitting that he had that love of baseball, because many years ago, 40-plus years ago, Chris came to Arizona in March, and he fell in love with March Madness, spring training, and the weather, and that's what brought him out to Arizona. So, we're grateful he visited us in March and not July. We may not be here today. So, I know he's had a fantastic career. He had a calling to come to Pinal County in 2012, and he watched the growth. I think you had three supervisors at that time, and it grew to five, and he's just done tremendous, tremendous work here and had a fantastic career. One of them is he started the Civil Deputies Association in connecting civil deputies from all the county attorney's offices across the state, which has been such a wonderful resources to all of the counties here. Chris has been, I know it's been an honor when I joined here and rejoined and got to know and worked with Chris again, he's been such a tremendous help. He's had fantastic work, and I am honored to be here to congratulate Chris for his hard work, his dedication, and his lasting impact that he has made, not only in Pinal County, but across Arizona. Thank you, Chris, and congratulations on your retirement.
I did have a few pictures to commemorate, but we, yeah, what, I could, we could do it after, or you want to do it first?
I'm not sure. I don't know what the pictures are.
Can I do that while you're standing there? I, I think it'll be fitting for, for the last one.
That'd be fine. Whatever you want, Leo, you're the manager, I'll take your lead.
All right, great. Natasha, if you could please, yeah. So, so this picture does illustrate how a difference-maker is not always seen, because you were not in this picture. But this was the, commemorating the largest state land auction sale that Pinal County has had for industrial advanced manufacturing, and this would not have happened without Chris, and Chris knows that he's worked with everybody in this picture to make that happen. And, and this is what is now on that land, and this was a couple, few months ago. This is LG Energy Solutions Phase One of, really a phase of, of a three-phase project, which could be a six-phase project, hopefully someday, on 300 acres, with an option to purchase another 300 acres. And this is the Superstition Mountain Central Arizona College Campus, the workforce training center that was created as a part of this large endeavor that combined has economic impact in multi-billion's annually, and Chris was a founding father of, of this project and, and really would not have been where it's at now. We'll be doing a ribbon cutting in April 4th on this, so hope to see Chris there for that. Well, and this is Lucid Motors, and we know what they've done and, and the facilities and manufacturing and the jobs and the education that's come along with all of, that their company brings to this area, and Chris was essential to the start and he was essential to the expansion. And this is-
By the way, Mr. Luke, his hair was a different color then?
Yeah. I did not mention the changing hair colors in the progression.
You have to age gracefully, or not.
We can see it now between this picture and now. So, this, this was, this was 20, this was the, actually the CSA, County Supervisor's Association Legislative Summit, where we packed up your animal so that you could ride off into the sunset. Thank you, Chris.
Well, Leo, that, they weren't as frightening as I thought they might be. Thank you, Board. Thank you, county management. Thank you, county attorney staff. I do have a 20-minute speech. No, I don't. You know, it's all, never, never safe to give the attorney a mic or a platform to talk, but I do have a few, few things that I'd like to at least acknowledge. It's true, I've been practicing law for over 40 years now, 40, is my 41st year. I've been down here in Pinal County for 12 years, three months, and 19 days, but who counts? And I did, I, I spent 18 years at Maricopa County before coming down here, and it's kind of an unusual story or a unique story how I got here, and it was the very first meeting in this room that was my first meeting, and your first meeting as a Board of Five that, that I attended, and I got to sit in the chair and advise you, but it was under Lando Voiles at the time. I didn't even know the man. You couldn't, I couldn't pick him out- You couldn't, I couldn't pick him out in a crowd. And I was sitting at home at my wife's house and I got a call, you know, in a November timeframe and I, I don't know who this is, you know, called and said, I, your name was given to me as someone who might be a good candidate for the chief civil in my administration. I'd like to talk to you. And I said, okay. And we set up a time and after I hung up the call, I looked over to my soon-to-be-wife and said, do you know this guy? And he's like, no, but you need to interview. You were meant for a position like that, you know, and Pinal could really use you. And she was living in Apache Junction, so she had very close familiarity with, with Pinal County. And as a result, you know, I'm here. I can remember the first day coming in and Mr. Miller was soon-to-be the Chair and I sat in the office with him up there and the first thing he said, we got some problems we need to take care of. He goes, there's this Kowtown monitor over there that, that we got to get moved from the EPA. And so, day number two, he was giving me a list of things that he wanted to get accomplished that he had legal issues to take care of. So, I got to know, know the Board and work with the Board over these years and I, and I'd like to express my thanks. From time to time, you're right, it's been challenging at best, but it has been also very rewarding. And so, I'd like to, you know, thank the Board, the staff, the Clerk's Office. It's been truly wonderful working with the Clerk's Office. They've been so good to make me look good and my staff is the one who makes me look good. It's always a team effort. The last thing I want to do is just one thing. When, when I first became Civil Chief in Maricopa County, my assistant gave this to me and I've held on to it ever since. And I think it's kind of point, pointed. Always do right. It will gratify some people and astonish the rest. Mark Twain. And, and I've tried to live by that always and I've always had that hanging in my office, whatever that office may be. But, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure and it's been my honor.
This requires a photo. Yes, yes.
And try this, I want to see what it looks like. Hold it on your hands like this. On the bottom. Yep, just like, there you go. I like that a little better because it won't see the lights.
I can put it higher.
Sneak it really tight. Highlight, not quite that tight. There it is. Okay, I love this. And three, two, and wait for it to charge. So, rest your face for the big smiles coming up.
Yeah.
I don't do, do not demand, it just sort of-
It just sort of comes out.
Okay, here we go. One more, three, two. All right, thank you guys.
I'd like to take a moment to just ask if any of the other supervisors have something to add to this. We did get the monitor moved, so. Anyway, Chris, it's been a pleasure working with you. Anybody?
I, I would just say, Mr. Chair, that Mr. Keller has been a pleasure to work with in my five years or four years and a few months. I've always appreciated his advice and his, and his information that he's able to give.
So, yeah, when you come into a new position like this, a lot of times you don't really know what you're doing and what's expected and there's people in your life, you look back at your parents or your favorite teacher or whatever. In this case, it was always a security blanket to look over and see Chris sitting there and know that we would get the right advice and, and the right, you know, words that we needed to hear, the guidance. So, yeah, it's, he was definitely a security blanket for us all. Rich?
Thank you Chairman. Chris, although I've only been sitting in this chair for, you know, the last few months, during election season, I've spent a lot of time talking with you and learning a lot and I really do appreciate that because it never stops, you know? My wife always said, no matter how many degrees you get, you will never know enough. And I appreciate the fact that you took the time to talk with me every single time for that year and a half prior, sitting in this chair, and it really meant a lot to me. So, thank you very much. God bless you and I'm sure you're going to enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone. Brings us to item number eight, Purchasing Division Report. We have, there you are. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Just moving right along. I, I know we're on a time crunch for someone here. Anyway, I'm sorry. Item number seven, A Proclamation Recognizing the Week of April 5th through the 25th through April 11th. This week of the Young Child Proclamation. Natasha. Is your name's next to it?
Yes Chairman, we're going to have Ms. Lopez come up and introduce the item.
Okay.
Good morning Board Members. My name is Jessica Moorhead. I'm the Chair for First Things First, the Pinal Regional Partnership Council. By the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, proclamation of-
Don't read it yet. We have to vote on it. Just introduce it and what it's about. Are we good?
Yes. Yes.
You want to say anymore about it?
So, we're just introducing the, the proclamation for Week of the Young Child, April 5th through April 11th, 2025.
Okay. What's the Board's pleasure? I need a motion.
Chairman, I motion-
Get your mic. We're all discombobulated.
Yeah. Chris Keller. Chairman, I'd like to approve item seven as read and I make the motion to approve.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Now, you may read it.
All right.
It's been approved.
Thank you. So, whereas all of Arizona's children deserve access to Quality Early Care and Education, or ECE, environments, and whereas quality childcare programs build children's lifelong learning skills during the critical years from birth to age five, and whereas ECE teachers and childcare providers are the essential workforce that helps Arizona parents get to work or school, and whereas funding quality childcare is a smart investment that improves family wellbeing, strengthens communities, and grows our state's prosperity. And whereas Arizona's Association for the Education of Young Children, First Things First, and other community organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the 53rd anniversary of the Week of the Young Child. And whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable early childhood opportunities that provide a strong start for children in Pinal County, and whereas public policy that support ECE for Arizona's youngest learning, learners help our families, communities, and the economy thrive. Now therefore, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim April 5th through 11th, 2025, as the Week of the Young Child in Pinal County, Arizona, and encourage all citizens to support and invest in early care and education in our community. Proclaim this day, 19, this 19th day of March, 2025. And I would now like to introduce Annette Lopez.
So, thank you Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, Board Members, Pinal County Leadership. This may have been a little bit of the introduction, our thank you, however, we're glad you've passed it. But we do want to say thank you for this incredible honor. We're deeply grateful to accept this proclamation recognizing the Week of the Young Child. So, this week is a special time to celebrate the importance of early childhood education and the amazing potential every child holds. It serves as a reminder of the vital role we all play in nurturing and supporting our youngest learners, whether through families, educators, or communities such as Pinal County, working together. As we reflect on the needs and growth of children, we recognize the importance of providing them with a foundation that supports their development, creativity, and joy. It's a privilege to be a part of a community and a county that values and advocates for these precious first years. I thank all those who are dedicated to making the world a better place for our children. Together, we can continue to foster environments where young minds can thrive, explore, and become the leaders of tomorrow. So, thank you again for this recognition, this proclamation, and for your ongoing commitment to the wellbeing of children everywhere, especially here in Pinal County. And as a little bit of a reminder, we, for that week, we will be hosting, our Pinal Early Childhood Coalition will be leading and spearheading four events around our county, summing your respective districts. So, we will be sending the flyer over to Ms. Kennedy for proper distribution and we welcome you to attend those events, be a face out in your districts and our community. And thank you again. We were here not too long ago with a presentation of the importance of early childhood, so again, we're deeply thankful and grateful that the Board has accepted this proclamation.
Thank you. Don't run off. It says here, followed by a photo. Okay. Now, we'll go to item number eight, the Purchasing Division Report, and then we'll pull up item 15 after that, so.
Good morning Chairman Miller, members of the Board, Angie Woods, Department of, Director of Department, Director of the Office of Management. Oh, my goodness.
Where do you work?
Where do I work today? I work for, I am the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. I apologize. I think I was just excited you wanted to come, me to come to the podium sooner. I am pleased to bring to you our Purchasing Division Report for Wednesday, March 19th. In the report, the Board is requested to approve three contract award, I'm sorry, two contract awards. RFP 220226 for Specialty Legal Services, RFP 252330 for Electronic Poll Books. We are recommending 15 contract amendments to exercise optional extension periods and one contract amendment to update statement of work and pricing. The, the solicitations for those contracts are ROQ 204226 for on-call architecture services, ROQ 204426 for on-call construction management services, ROQ 204726 for on-call facilities assessment retro-commissioning services, ROQ 204826 for on-call general airport services, ROQ 204926 for on-call general civil engineering, ROQ 205026 for on-call geotechnical engineering services, ROQ 205226 for on-call regional park trail and open space planning, ROQ 205326 for on-call traffic engineering services, ROQ 205426 for on-call trail planning and design services, ROQ 205526 for on-call water resource engineering services, ROQ 205826 for on-call archaeological environmental engineering services, ROQ 205926 for on-call transportation planning services, ROQ 207026 for airport engineering design and construction project management, RFP 222326 for public health consulting, RFP 223426 for public health accreditation consulting, and lastly, RFQ 204126 for towing services for PCSO. The report also contains three purchase orders that we're making you aware of between $100,000 and $250,000 that we have utilized cooperative contracts. And lastly, we are seeking approval of three cooperative purchase requisitions that are over the amount of $250,000. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Woods? Hearing and seeing, none. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Purchasing Division Report as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, as I announced at the beginning of the meeting, I'm moving item number 15 next. So, we'll have item 15 brought up. And this is approval, discussion, approval, disapproval of a support letter to the Arizona Department of Transportation, including improvements to State Route 347 in their five-year plan. Mr. Rich?
Thank you Chairman.
Let's go with that.
So, before I make any comments, this has been a long-term, hard-fought to get this road approved and Pinal County has stepped up. And before I say anymore, I'd like to bring up Madam Mayor Nancy Smith to make some comments and then after that, Council Member Honore Marie Noor after that.
Good morning. Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Supervisors, and Supervisor Vitti Yello. I missed having Goodman here so I could hear him say that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Of course, I'm here to speak on 347 and if you know anything about me, the term 347 is now my new love language. If Tony wants to get my attention, all he has to do is say 347 and I'm paying attention. So, it's that important to me. I'm here to respectfully ask you, oh, before I do that, I was reminded by Bretton Billingsley that Congressman Gahava was the one congressman that represented our area when the overpass on 347 in the city of Maricopa was put in place and he was one of the best representatives. I want to give him credit for that, especially at this time. Thank you. I'm here to respectfully ask you to pass this agenda item. Just to give you a little bit of context, 347 has 58,000 vehicles traveling that, that road every single day. That's more than intersections such as Flagstaff and I-10. It's more than intersections along I-17 and many of the locations there. It's a significant amount of vehicles that travel that road every day. It is also has two of the most deadliest intersections on that road, 347, in all of Western United- in all of Western United States. So, there's a report out that says here are the 10 most deadliest intersections. Two of them are on 347. So, that just gives you a little idea of the danger. As you also know, Maricopa voters supported by a supermajority to support both PRTA opportunities for propositions. Unfortunately, the last one did not pass, but the citizens of Maricopa know how dangerous that road is and supported those propositions by a supermajority. Now, the city is looking to move with ADOT and with Penile County, if you should pass this today, and many other partners, to have a creative solution in terms of a local contribution. So, we appreciate that. We think that this will move the mark. And it might seem like a new concept, but actually 30 years ago, when 347 went from one lane in each direction to two lanes in each direction, Penile County was part of that, as well as the city of Maricopa. Well, it actually wasn't a city at the time, but the people wanting to make it into a city, the farmers, the landowners, the developers, were part of that discussion, as well as Maricopa County ADOT. They all worked together to get that from one lane in each direction to two lane in each direction with contributions. So, it is not a new concept. It has been used before, and we're excited to potentially have this passed here today. So, given that, I would appreciate your partnership in this local contribution to get this road completed. You would join wonderful partners such as MAG, Penile County, Maricopa County, Hila River Indian Community, ADOT, and the state, and the city of Maricopa, giving a significant contribution as well. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your consideration.
Good morning Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman Clark, Board. I'll keep this short because the mayor did an amazing job. She's got those talking points down. But thank you for your consideration of this important contribution to the much-needed improvements on State Route 347. The demonstration of your support today will really help to show the significance of this issue as we continue to work with our partners at the State Transportation Board to make this a reality and to get these improvements made, and the widening, the additional lane, which are so critically necessary for not only the constituents of the city of Maricopa, but this really is a regional solution to traffic problems. For those that live in Casa Grande, they're very aware that when the I-10 shuts down, and they're trying to get into Phoenix, they get to come through Maricopa on the State Route 347, which we were just reminded of on Monday, when they shut down the I-10. And so, this really is a regional solution. It's an important road for lots of reasons, and we really appreciate your support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. This has been an extreme team effort, and this goes back to Tony Smith when he was the mayor of city, Maricopa, when he was a supervisor for Penile County. Nancy and all the council members, past and present, Christian Price, Kelly Anderson. This road is personal to a lot of us. I've said my story numerous times of a dear friend of mine who's still in a home today, who will probably never come out of the vegetation. Unfortunately, that he was hit by a park in a major accident nine years ago. And so, this is so important to fix this portion. As the mayor said, that, you know, the Maricopa portion has been funded. The overpass has been funded. And with hopefully the funding here from the Board to help ADOT put us on the five-year plan, I really look forward to this because it's going to save lives. When people drive up and down that road every day, they wonder if they're going to get home alive, or is it going to take them four or five hours to get home? So, I hope that the Board can see in their hearts and that this is something that's really needed because it's not just fixing a road, it's saving lives. And it's near and dear to me. It's been near and dear to them, to the past and present. Like I said, council members, mayors, Board members, they've all driven there. They've all been there, and I just hope that we can approve this. So, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 15 as written.
Bretton. I'd like to, I'd like to ask a question, though, of you because I noticed here included in the improvement, is it not included in the five-year plan at this point in time?
As of right now.
That's kind of the sticking point I'd like to understand.
As of right this second, over the, Mayor, you may correct me if I'm wrong, but over the next few months to be put into the five-year plan.
Okay, to add it to the five-year plan.
This is to solidify the, especially the Penile County portion.
Sure. And I think that's important so that when we communicate with ADOT, that we want to make, see it coming up here. So, okay, thank you, Rich. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Best. And I hope you're able to keep all your appointments. Okay. Absolutely. Happy to do it. I believe that brings us to item number nine, the consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless the Board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda items are called. I have Supervisor Vialito with item G asked to be removed. I'm asking that B and E be removed, or B, BE and BF. I have a BC by a Tom Bean. Any other members of the Board? Management? Anybody else from the audience? BB, boy-boy? BB. BC's already being pulled, and BD. Yes, BB is one of them from the. Okay. Make a couple notes here. Okay, anyone else? Anything else? Okay, are you clear on the ones being pulled? Staff, Board?
Just to be clear, it was BB, BC, BD, BE, BF.
And G.
And G.
G as in, yeah.
Only, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, then I would make a motion that we approve the consent items A through BG minus G, BB, BC, BD, BE, and BF.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. G. Natasha.
Yes, Chairman.
Name is next to it, so I'm calling on you.
That's fine, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. This is actually an appointment by Supervisor Vitiello.
Okay.
Thank you, Natasha, and thank you, Chairman. So, I had a position on planning and zoning available. And this was, I had five candidates. It was a very difficult choice. They were all great. They all would have done a great job. And unfortunately, I can only pick one. So, I've decided to go with a gentleman that I've gotten to know over the last year and a half, and I've seen him in Coolidge meetings, and he's very involved. I'm going to read a little bit about Tom, just a little bit because there's a whole bunch of stuff here, that he is just an amazing candidate. And like I said, they all were. So, Tom also, he has a four-year degree at ASU in general business. So, he knows his business. He's the president of MSN, MNS Equipment for 25 years in the city of Coolidge. He serves, served three two-year terms on City Council Economic Development Board. He's also been an Eagle Scout. His, it just, it just keeps going on and on. He's also served Picacho Peak District Chairman for the Boy Scouts. Serves many, many different callings for his church. He's current a council member, current a member of the Coolidge Chamber of Commerce. His experience in planning and zoning just is ongoing over and over again. This man loves to serve, and he's been part of the community for so many years, 40-plus years. And I am honored to ask Tom to become our next Planning and Zoning Board Member, Tom Scott II. So, Tom, if you don't mind, could you come up here, accept the, or do we want to do it afterwards? Okay, I'm sorry, Tom.
The vote first.
So, sorry, I'd like to approve G as read.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Tom, did you want, Tom, come up and? I know Tom as well. He's a good pick. I said it. Guess we can. Photo bomb this. Okay, let's see here. Get back to my list. BB. Get to. Okay, BB. Roberto, you're the one that asked this to be pulled. Do you have a specific question that you want answered in this presentation?
Roberto Ravellus, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, yes, I'd like to direct, really, sort of the same underlying question to these three items that I requested, so I don't want to take undue time. But basically, questioning the judgment of staff within PCSO that demonstrates an overreaction. In one instance, an armored vehicle resulting in almost half a million dollars cost, whereas the justification, according to the backup material, based on a mass shooting in Casa Grande that resulted in one death, whereas that same PCSO that experienced 1,600-plus deaths during COVID that refused to abide by public health recommendation on masking. It just demonstrates that we really need to look more critically at the judgment that is exercised within PCSO. Essentially, it's a general observation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. So, we'll ask Sheriff Tippels to respond. Oh, I'm sorry. You as well? Noel, I'm sorry. And then, the way I want to handle that is we'll take each one of these items and vote on them one at a time, in hopes that maybe the answers kind of go across all of them, but we'll take the votes one at a time.
My comments are related, Noel Recfamiloi. My comments are related to item BC. Well, this didn't take long and couldn't have fit in more nicely to my remarks during call to the public. Based on what I will expose there, this comes as no surprise. I'm obviously against the militarization of the sheriff's office. I wonder what's next, RPGs, flamethrowers, tanks. I believe this is all part of the theater being perpetrated by the Trump administration. As an example, the raid in Phoenix that netted a 60-some-year-old man who has been here for 40 years and never been in trouble, and was arrested at his home by at least 10 ICE agents riding in five big black SUVs and an armored vehicle with a battering ram attached. Is this what we want in Penile County? Well, some might. This might make for great theater for the new cop show the county has signed on to. My understanding is Penile County is attached to the 287G Task Force with an agreement on jail enforcement from 2016. To my knowledge, Sheriff Tippel has not agreed to the recent invitation to join further with stepped-up ICE arrests and detentions, yet. But I wouldn't doubt that's coming based on this request. I hope he'll prove me wrong. I'm also wondering about how this would tie into the bounty bill as well. If it passes, I'm sure Governor Hobbs will give it the quick veto it so richly deserves. I would hope that there are much better ways to be granted $416,000 than this. Thank you.
And Tom Bean? Tom Bean, you requested this. Are you good with it? Elaborate on your question.
Good morning Chairman, members of the Board. Tom Bean, before I begin, I would like to say something. I'm down to one hearing aid today, and I haven't heard much of this meeting. Leo Lu, I appreciate your speaking into the microphone. I can hear you every time. When you guys talk to one another, you're not facing the microphone. If you could help me out. I'm Tom Bean of Casa Grande. I learned of Sheriff Tippel's request for an armored vehicle with alarm. Such a vehicle is expensive and seldom of any use, fortunately. One use would be to transport a high-valued criminal to prevent an attack, to free the prisoner. Another would be transporting a load of gold. Yet another would be plowing through a house to help end a standoff or an entry in a parade. Most uses could be anticipated. Penile County might be able to borrow such a vehicle from Maricopa County. Of course, in an emergency, borrowing would not work. How long would it take to drive an armored vehicle from the PCSO headquarters to, say, Casa Grande, San Tan, Oracle, Maricopa City, Apache Junction? Its value is lost if it cannot arrive in time to answer a call. Penile County is vast, some communities harder to reach than others. I do not see the use, the maintenance, the case of this vehicle as a good idea. Mass shootings are rare. A mass shooting is four or more people murdered with a firearm. Between January 2009 through July 2015, there were 133 mass shootings in 39 states. Standoffs are more likely. It is unlikely that the PCSO could wait until the armored vehicle arrived. I ask this Board not to make a decision lightly. Study the issue carefully. Consider the cost of maintaining that vehicle. If there is a, they're armored, and if damaged, to replace, expensive. If the bulletproof glass is riddled, expensive to replace. Discuss options with Maricopa and Pima County Board of Supervisors and their Sheriff's Department. I thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. I think that's everybody, so we'll allow Sheriff Tippels. Do you want to opine on each one of these items individually or collectively, however you want to?
Chairman, Chairman of the Board, Vice Chairman, members of the Board, Penile County citizens, Sheriff Ross Tippel. If we're talking about BC, sir, I'd like to thank the last gentleman for making most of the same comments that I was going to make. What he doesn't understand is this is to replace an aging armored vehicle that is stationed out of Casa Grande. Is that my time's up?
No. No.
So, Casa Grande has an armored vehicle that we use for the western part of Penile County. We have an armored vehicle here stationed at the Coolidge Airport for the eastern part of Penile County. Myself and Deputy Aiken are two of the only individuals I know that are qualified to drive the big armored vehicle, and both of us can tell you that however long it takes you to drive from here to Maricopa. you to drive from here to Maricopa, it's going to be two and a half times longer if you're driving an armored vehicle. They're big, they're heavy, they stop very poorly, but they protect my staff. And more importantly, modern law enforcement standards and practices show that an armored vehicle on a high-risk search warrant is valuable for protecting the citizens, because everyone now with a phone is a member of the press, and they can be out there on a sidewalk filming. And what we do with the armored vehicle is where we will park it so it not only protects our staff, but also protects the citizens that are behind the armored vehicle while they're filming the scene, because that's their right to do so as long as they do it in a safe manner. So that's why I'm asking the board to approve this grant purchase, because it keeps Pinell County safer, and it also reduces the wear and tear on the one vehicle that we have now, because we're having to call it into service more often, and it has to drive a lot longer distance. Every mile that is added on to it, the tires cost a lot of money. It's built on a Ford F-350 chassis, so it uses about three gallons per mile, it seems like, as far as diesel goes. So that's why having two of them situated in both parts of the state of Connecticut is wise.
Okay. Board, do you have any questions for, I do, Sheriff Teeples at this time?
So, this is a, not a military vehicle, it's more geared towards police work?
Yes, sir, it's built specifically for urban police work, for serving high, we're search wards. I've never heard of one being used to transport gold.
So it's not an MRAP or anything like that that was decommissioned?
No, sir. We find that those are extremely expensive, and they have a lot of proprietary equipment on them that you can only get through the military, which causes long downtimes with that. So that's why the newer ones are built on commercially available chassis. I would prefer it be a Dodge Cummins, but I don't get to make that choice. It's the company that makes it.
So there's two of them in the county?
There's currently one in the county. It's based at the Coolidge Airport. Casa Grande has an armored vehicle that is based on an MRAP. It is very expensive to maintain, and more times than not, when they go to attempt to use it for the western part of Pinell County, it breaks down on us.
How about high clearance for, like, high-water rescues and going off-road into ditches, et cetera?
Everywhere but a wash. It's actually very useful for that. We did station it at one time when they were calling for the massive storms in San Tan Valley, so we could cross through intersections and stuff, but it is such a heavy vehicle for the protection of the occupants and the people behind it that you wouldn't want to drive it down a sandy wash.
So, I think you kind of mentioned this, so it can be used as a defensive item to protect hostages or the citizenry instead of an offensive weapon to attack bad guys, right? So it can shield, shield the people that are in harm's way, correct?
That's its primary responsibility and duty, and that's what it's built for, is to protect the occupants inside the vehicle, not only the occupants inside the vehicle, where there are hostage negotiators while they're attempting to negotiate a peaceful resolution to the situation, but also protect the people behind them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions of the sheriff? So like I said, we'll take these, one item at a time. The pleasure on BB.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve BB as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Take BC.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve BC as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. And BD.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve BD as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. For me, I think the thing that's important there is those are submitting grant applications, so there's always a chance they won't get funded with the way things are going in DC. Okay, that should bring us to item...
BF.
BE and BF. So I pulled these two items, and a couple of things. One, I know we don't have staff here to ask, give me some specific information that I'd asked about it. And then I asked even more questions, and they go, you're getting into the legal ramifications. So I would ask that we go into E-session on BE and BF, so I can propose some legal questions to staff, and then we'll decide kind of how to move forward on those two items moving Do they agree with me?
Yes.
Can I get a motion?
You're the motioners, I'm the seconders.
Mr. Chair, I move we recess the regular Board of Supervisors meeting, or the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting and convene executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. We'll be in E-session for a few moments. We good? We live? Tom, I'll try and speak into the microphone a little better. He didn't raise his head, so. So I was not able to get my legal questions answered entirely, so...
We need to do a motion here.
Oh, get, oh yeah, give us a suspension.
Mr. Chair, I move we recess executive session and reconvene the regular meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
We are already going into one later.
Oh, we're already, we're already in.
I just recessed.
We're just recessed. Okay. Okay, we're back into regular session.
I don't need a second on that. No, just...
I did not get my answers to BE and BF, and so I think the prudent thing might be to continue these two items. Is there any way I could get a motion to continue these two items?
Mr. Chair, I move we, do we need to do it separately? Mr. Chair, I move that we continue items B and, BE and BF to April 2nd, regular session.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Flood control. So, we're going to suspend the Board of Supervisors' meeting and open up the meeting for the Pinell County Flood Control District. Get turned to that tab. We have consent items, only consent items, so all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Does anybody want A or B pulled on the board? Anybody from staff? Anybody from the public? Seeing and hearing none, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve items A and B on the, of the consent items on the Pinell County Flood Control District agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Brings us to the Pinell County Library District.
Do you want, no, you have to like...
Oh, I have to adjourn the flood district. And open up the library district. So all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, a member of the county manager's office, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. We have A and B. Anybody want anything pulled from, anybody on the board? Anybody from management? Anybody from the public? Seeing and hearing none, we'll, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consent items A and B on the Pinell County Library District agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Adjourned the library district, and we'll open up the Pinell County Health Services District with items A, B, C, and D. All, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Anybody from the board? Anybody from the management? Anybody from the public? Seeing and hearing none, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve consent items A through D on the Pinell County Public Health Services District agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Health District has passed. Gets us to item number thirteen, which is a call to the public. I believe that's... So, call the public, all, called the public, item number ten, all call, what's?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Thirteen in there, okay. Is the time for the period to, for members of the public to address the Board of Supervisors, to provide public input relating to subject matters within the Board of Supervisors' authority and jurisdiction. Those wishing to address the Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Actions taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or reschedule to a further, for further consideration and discussion at a later date. I do have a couple of items, see, that was consent, so we already did that one. Item number thirteen, D. Do your last name for me, please. Pardon me? Dia. Dia. Okay. Okay. I'll work on that. Thank you.
Padaski, and I live in unincorporated Pinell County near Lost Dutchman State Park. When researching candidates for the November election, I was pleased that Brad Miller listed our schools as one of his issues, as education is my passion and was my profession. Education is the foundation of the American dream, upward mobility, and democracy. However, I had questions about Mr. Miller's contention that the implementation of woke policies in our school and government is leading our great nation towards socialism. Even after researching the ESG framework and World Economic Forum, both mentioned it in his website, the connection between woke and socialism was unclear. Communism, which is incorrectly often used interchangeably with socialism, is a different case. The Crucial Communism Teaching Act was a proposed United States law, creating a high school curriculum to teach the evils of communism. It passed the House but not the Senate in the 118th Congress, which ended in January. An opinion piece on Fox News from March 27th gave a rationale. Communism may not be knocking at our door, but it is spying in our backyard. Why then are children not being taught the truth? Currently, there are five communist countries in the world, China, Cuba, Laos, Vietnam, North Korea. I've been to four, because we plan our trips based on what's on sale. One thing that all countries had in common was government control of ideas. I see an alarming trend toward government control of information in the United States. Fox News stories from January 20th till today provide evidence of this trend. Education. Sixty universities under investigation by Trump administration for anti-Semitic dissemination and harassment, discrimination and harassment. Press. White House to decide which news outlets cover Trump. Breaking press tradition. The arts. Trump fires Kennedy Center board members citing drag shows. Appoints himself chair. Public spaces. Pentagon order removal of 26,000 military images. Rational for the thoughts on freedom of information included ridding out antisemitism and abolishing DEI. It is difficult for me to take these seriously when the president pardoned Proud Boys, Oath Keepers, and makes appointments based on loyalty and vengeance. Socrates said, "Democracy is only as good as the education that surrounds it." George Washington said, "If freedom of speech is taken away, then dumb and silent we may be led, like sheep to the slaughter." I see woke as a virtue, not an indictment. Thank you.
Thank you. Have no other cards, but has anybody from the public, please come forth?
I'm Noel Rec from Eloy. First, rest in peace Representative Raul Manuel Grealva. You've served us well. Chairman Miller has indicated county departments are shooting for an April date to present reports regarding Trump policies that will affect them, the county in general, and its constituents. I gladly look forward to hearing from them. I am equally embittered, thinking back to months ago, trying to warn this body about Project 2025. Chair Goodman stubbornly refused to address my well-founded concerns. Partisan ideology or personal conflict, I don't know. I do know it was a clear dereliction of duty, putting the county months behind in addressing the issues. Today, I offer 302 headlines from the Arizona Republic and Casa Grande Dispatch from January 20th up to today, everyone germane to Pinell County. I asked the board to scan them to determine additional action before the April presentations. It took a lot of time to put this together, please take the time to give it a look. However, my focus today is exposing a white nationalist group against all immigration, FAIR, the Federation of Americans for Immigration Reform. With time constraints, here are just a few quotes from the founder, John Tanton, current President Dan Stein, and other Fair members exposing their bigotry. I'll submit more for the record separately. Immigrants don't come church-loving, freedom-loving, God-fearing, and many of them hate America, hate everything that the United States stands for. Stein. That for European-American society and culture to persist requires a European-American majority and a clear one at that. Tanton. The current European-American majority will become a minority. This is unacceptable. We decline to bequeath minority status to our children in their own land. Tanton. White nationalists Jared Taylor. When blacks are left entirely to their own devices, Western civilization, any kind of civilization disappears. As, as whites see their power and control over their lives declining, will they simply go quietly into the night, or will there be an explosion? Tanton. White nationalists Lawrence Oster. If the US loses its white majority, it will be destroyed because of an invasion. America is in the process of dissolving as a nation. White nationalists Rick Altman. Black people are a retrograde species of humanity. The freedom to breed is intolerable. Former Sheriff Lamb, who went into law enforcement, because you get to drive fast, you get to have a gun, and you get to rough people up, has become Fair's law enforcement advisor. I discovered this viewing of Fair-sponsored podcast with Mr. Lamb interviewing Sheriff Teeples. The interview laced with red meat for the base MAGA phrasing throughout. Mr. Lamb ended it promising, "If there's anything Fair can do to you, or can do for you, they're always here to help sheriffs like yourself figure out about getting the information they need and the support they need to be able to combat this border crisis." Sheriff Teeples didn't say, "No, thank you." If Pinell County enters into any affiliation with this bigot-laden group, resignation should be submitted, and if not tendered, recalls initiated. I ask for your timely response in and out of Sheriff Teeples and County Attorney Miller to indicate where the county stands, accepting the bigotry of Fair or providing fair-minded responsibility, responsible governance for the citizens of Pinell County.
Anyone else from the audience that'd like to speak?
Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon, occupant of the Amen Corner that gathers us over here. Mr. Chairman, first, I'm going to thank Chris Elliott for emerging as a proponent of ensuring a legal playing field between Pinell County government and those of us critics from the governed. Thank you very much, Chris. You've done a wonderful public service for us here. Today's front page of Arizona's Republic reports on the disgraceful website removal of references to Native American code talkers' heroic work. The New York Times also reports that that same erasure... The New York Times also reports that that same erasure of heroic actions affects a personal friend of mine, Lieutenant Colonel Hector Santana from Miami, Arizona. Today's agenda, however, is a testament to the hypocrisy that I see reflected by the persistent racism in America's society at the local and federal level. Today's agenda contains 20 applications for Native American funds to the tune of $2.6 million, grants forced upon Native Americans for the privilege of operating gambling casinos. Hypocrisy at the local and federal level, as demonstrated by the draft Dodgers' pronouncement from the White House mandating removal of websites that maintain, that mention any heroic military contributions by minorities, which he seeks to eliminate through his campaign against diversity, equity, and inclusion. Those words that have meaning that has been perverted by a propaganda campaign over the past few years. Words that originally meant seeking fair treatment and full participation of all people. Words that reflect what's inscribed in Constitution's preamble. Quote, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish a Constitution of the United States." The preamble's words, "Establish justice," require equity, both in its biblical and in its financial sense. Promote the general welfare requires inclusion. Without inclusion, you cannot promote the general welfare. We must fight against this continuing racism. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. Moves us to item number 14 on the agenda. Decision approval or disapproval of resolution number 031925-AQ, resolution pursuant to Title 49 of Arizona statute. I believe this has something to do with air quality and what have you. So, Anna or Anuah? Who wants to present? You? Anu? Thank you. This does have a public hearing, but I'll ask for the presentation first, and then we'll see if there's... Open up the public hearing after that.
Good morning, Chairman Mill, members of the Board, members of the public. Rupesh Patel, Pinal County Air Planning Manager. This short presentation will provide you a little history on our efforts to improve the county air quality and the regulatory changes we seek to make to our existing control measures. Could I advance this slide? I see. Thank you. Okay, so we'll start with why we're seeking to undertake this rulemaking. It begins with our commitment, our ongoing commitment to demonstrate compliance with the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. And these standards for ozone really are set to provide protection for children, older adults, and people with asthma and other respiratory symptoms. Now, while our existing control measures continue to locally reduce the emissions of air pollutants that contribute to ozone formation, we are unable to meet the existing 2015 ozone standard. Based on our air quality monitoring data, EPA has classed a small portion of Pinal County as nonattainment or not meeting the standard. So let's take a look at where that nonattainment boundary exists. And using the word earlier on, I heard the state Connecticut, that portion of the 2015 nonattainment area is essentially the size of Connecticut. And we have a small portion within that area specifically targeting the Gold Canyon... Sorry, the Gold Canyon, Queen Creek, Queen Valley, and the Santan Valley. Let's move ahead. I'm going to just provide you a little discussion on ozone control measures, and I thought it'd be helpful to have a quick refresh on what ozone is and how it's formed. There are two essential... Two types of ozone. The high-altitude ozone or the good ozone, that's high up in the atmosphere, and it forms a protective barrier around the earth from the harmful sun ultraviolet rays. Now, the other type of ozone, which is the regulated ozone that EPA conducts, is the ground-level ozone or bad ozone, and this is kind of formed closer to earth where in the air that we breathe. Ozone is not usually emitted directly, but rather it's a complicated kind of chemical reaction between nitric oxide and volatile organic compounds, and the NOx and the VOC. And that, combined with the abundant sunlight that we have in Arizona, it formulates this ground-level ozone. And typically, you would see the highest ozone levels during the afternoon hours of the summer months, and when the influence of direct sunlight is the greatest. Ground-level ozone, or O3, is a regulated pollutant, as I mentioned, by EPA, and the sources of which are the kind of the precursors of NOx and VOCs really come from several sources, including what's related to combustion sources, cars, trucks, power plants, industrial boilers, refineries, and chemical plants. Ozone can also come from chemicals that we use in paints, cleaners, solvents, and motorized lawn equipment. But there is also a large component that's also related to the desert flora that we have, that we have in our desert. So, moving on, this rulemaking really establishes kind of an expansion of the applicability of existing rules that we have on our books. As I mentioned earlier, it is kind of really focused to demonstrate compliance with the ozone standard that was set in 2015. Back in 2008, the ozone standard was slightly higher, and the most recent standard is becoming more stringent. Back in 2008, the Board set out some regulatory changes to ensure that our air quality kind of comes in line with what EPA expects us to control. And those kind of control measures were related to two types of sources: surface coating operations and gasoline dispensing facilities. And then we also had to submit a negative declaration document to EPA asserting that we have a complete analysis of all our sources within the nonattainment area, and we have implemented what's called a kind of a reasonably available control technology to all those sources. The Board approved those measures back in 2020, and as I mentioned, since 2008, standard has been revised. The new 2015 standard is more stringent, and the ozone nonattainment area was expanded. This was our nonattainment area boundary back in 2008. It was targeted specifically for the Apache Junction area. The lowering of the standard really called now for that area to be expanded. So that was the original area there, the Apache Junction area, and to the east, now encompassing Gold Canyon, and to the south, Queen Creek and Santan Valley. So that's our jurisdiction of the 2015 ozone nonattainment area. So what we are looking for in this kind of rule amendment is really to expand the applicability of those existing rules that we have on the books to those sources within the expanded portion of the 2015 nonattainment area. EPA did come back with certain improvements to make to our existing rules. There were kind of identified here as really just grammatical kind of areas or things that we just need to slightly tweak to become in line with what EPA's model rule was. Those related to leaks and how we go about measuring them. There was a topographical area to identify the kind of reference that we used for the testing method. And there was also a specific exclusion for farm operations, and then tanks greater than 550 gallons would be... These are storage of gasoline service for vehicles at farm operations. If they were larger than 550 gallons, they're subject to general housekeeping requirements. And those tanks that are less than 550 gallons were to be exempt from all requirements of the rule.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Mr. Patel, so what are the general housekeeping requirements? What would that be? That's rather vague.
Well, the housekeeping requirements is what you normally would practice when you spill something on the ground. There would be measures where you would kind of, first of all, limit the spill, close out the actual what's causing spill, and then clean up operations. At a gasoline service station, you would have these facilities equipped with various sand buckets or, you know, absorbent material to mop up any kind of gasoline spills.
So that you don't let it just evaporate?
Absolutely, yeah.
Would this also require, at some point, the vapor recovery nozzles like to use in Southern California?
Well, those measures are deemed classed, the kind of stage-two requirements. Now, there was a requirement made, or actually an analysis done on the effectiveness of stage-two. And what they've found is it really is now, because of the modern technology that cars have, all of the vapors that normally emanate from vehicles are kind of sucked back into the vehicle, and the kind of onboard mechanisms of the vehicle kind of control those vapors. Stage-two is not necessarily required anymore by those facilities operating gasoline service stations, because the effects of modern technology in vehicles really take away that kind of requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
The... Just staying on with the EPA kind of evaluation of our rules. There was a simple grammatical error in the surface coating rule that really changed the word "than" to "that," and that was specifically called out by EPA. The rulemaking timeline, we engaged all our sources that are permitted within the timeline of our public notice. We used our Constant Contact, which is kind of a program that we use to gather all the people that are interested in public comment. We sent out over 4,320 emails to all those people who are interested in any rule revisions that we make, and we didn't receive a single comment back. The stakeholder meeting was open on February 20th. We conducted an oral proceeding to answer any questions that the public had on February 24th. We didn't have any attendees or formal comments submitted during that period of time, and here we are at the Board of Supervisors meeting on March 19th. And I respectfully request that the Board consider approving the agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more quick question. What happens if we stay... If we remain in nonattainment? What happens?
Well, it is a regulatory requirement. At the end of the day, it's like, you know, we are in a nonattainment, and we have certain obligations to fulfill under the Clean Air Act to ensure that our air quality doesn't get any worse, and we'll be back to a standard where it's kind of meeting the National Ambient Air Quality Standards.
So then my next question would be, is it attainable?
That is something that we have to just wait and see. We do everything that EPA has required us to do on the books that allow us to kind of implement rules within our stationary sources or industrial sources that we permit. Beyond that, we do our best effort, you know, just to keep up. Unfortunately, as I mentioned, the way ozone is formed, it is from combustion. It is a lot from our desert flora as well. So some part of it is uncontrollable, and I think that's kind of the message that certainly our friends over at MAG, the Maricopa Association of Governments, is also relaying to the higher ups in EPA that there's only so much we can do to control ozone.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good questions. Thank you. Any other questions? At this point, I'll open up the public hearing portion of this. Anybody want to speak to it? Yes, please. Go ahead. Come on up.
Roberto Revellis, resident of Gold Canyon. It's difficult, Mr. Chairman, to hear clearly during this testimony that was just presented, so I may have missed something that would have filled the question that I have.
Okay.
In Gold Canyon, we're expecting to have two additional gasoline dispensing facilities, gas stations. And I'm curious, what is being done now while the gas station number one going up in Gold Canyon to make sure that they don't contribute to the nonattainment of that facility? Like I say, I'm sorry, but I tried desperately to hear and may not have heard an answer already.
We'll ask staff to address that. There's a permitting process, so let's see if they can't answer your question at this time.
Absolutely. So it really kind of boils down to what we have on our books to control volatile organic compounds from gasoline service stations. There is an EPA regulatory kind of framework set out for dispensing of gasoline and the storage of gasoline. Those are federally enforceable conditions that we have implemented for all our inter shores, all our gasoline service stations. And what's important is that these service stations abide by the same rules as every other gasoline service station within our area or outside our jurisdiction as well. A lot of these service stations that you'll see coming in nowadays are really under this kind of the one kind of umbrella. There may be a particular type of service station, a QT. It might be, you know, a Circle K. And they have all the regulatory requirements that they've abided by within other areas of the county as well. So we've got that kind of level playing field of what's applicable to all our sources, whether they're existing operations or new operations.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Roberto? Yeah. They're highly regulated, and there's provisions in the permitting process. Mr. Rec, did you have something? Hit that button before. There we go.
Noel Rec from Eli. Just a question. I wonder how the county will deal with all this when the EPA, under the current administration and Secretary Zeldin, is rendered toothless or completely dismantled? Thank you.
Did you want...
I'll just share something. Good morning, Board members. Anu Jane, Director of Pinal County's Air Quality Program. So, we do have a process for all the gas stations and all the permitted facilities that we go through. They're also bound by federal, not only local, but federal standards. And just to comment on... So our Administrator Zeldin is visiting Arizona next week, and we do have a representative, our partners, Maricopa County and MAG, Maricopa Association of Government, and the state that are going to bring up issues, not just within Pinal, but also how the nonattainment area ozone is affecting or impacting Maricopa County as well as Pinal. This is something that we've been working for years with all our agencies, regulatory agencies, going through meetings and developing all these programs. So we are going to bring all the issues that we have to Administrator Zeldin, and we're hoping that we come to a conclusion, because most of the issues that we are presenting... hoping that we come to a conclusion, because most of the issues that we are presenting is, I guess the main issue here we're seeing in Maricopa County and Pinal is the NOx, the nitrogen oxide is decreasing while VOC is increasing, and that's kind of very alarming to us, because we are doing everything we can, and we don't understand the science behind it. So one of the things that we're asking for EPA to help us out is understanding the science behind how this can happen, when the levels of one pollutant is going down and the other is rising up, and they're all binding together, there are precursors of ozone. So we are bringing up these issues with Administrator Zeldin, and hopefully we'll have some resolution, and that's all we can hope for at this point.
Okay, yeah, and I believe the state works with us on all of that as well. I mean, we have state regulations as well, so, okay.
May I comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the NOx from cars and all that is getting less and less. The VOCs, though, that's from paints and all that, so if you paint something, you're releasing VOCs, right? So that would be the building of homes and painting trim and painting stucco. So that's some of the answer right there, you know, not to open a huge can of worms, but...
And you'll hear from us again, we are also working on, like you said, on the architectural coating rule, because one of the requirements from EPA is that our rules should be aligned with what Maricopa County has in their books. Even though the portion, Pinal County portion of the non-attainment area is so small, it's just roughly 300 square miles, and Maricopa County has a majority of portion as non-attainment, and they're doing extensive work. But however, doesn't matter if the area is small or big, the challenges are the same. We still have to go through the same regulatory process. And so we will be working on one of the rules, architectural coating rules, that would help reaching us that goal of reducing VOCs. And EPA, although it's a very extensive rulemaking for just Pinal County, but EPA just wants us to do our best. You know, they just don't want us to, just because we're a small area, they just want us, all the rules to be aligned. So when industrial comes to Pinal County, they're not choosing Pinal County just because our rules are less stringent than Maricopa County's. So that's another thing we're working on, improving our coating rules.
So we could just build a wall there along the side and keep Maricopa there?
And I'll validate that in the economic development world, in the meetings I've been involved in, we're very fortunate to have staff that's willing to discuss all of these with potential future projects that come in, because it is a very important part of the location, but our standards are very high, and we maintain that. I remember talking with Mike about it years ago, what's causing all this? He goes, it's all that grease wood we have out there, you know? And so the floral part of it is a part of it as well, so it kind of comes with the territory.
And to answer your question, Vice Chairman McClure, what happens if we stay in non-attainment? So right now, the portion is in moderate non-attainment, and we have to submit a plan to EPA by May. They just have, it has to be a complete plan, not approval. And if we don't do anything, then we are hit by offset sanctions. There are offset sanctions, there are highway funding sanctions. And then finally, if we don't do anything, and if it's non-attained in a reasonable time, the federal government can take over the air quality program in the end. So the attainment date is 2027 for, to attain ozone standards, and so we're working really diligently with our partners and trying to make sure that we do attain that standard in 2027.
So that also goes along with the attainment levels for PM 10 and PM 5 over on the particulate matter, five, many, many things. But they've not taken that over yet, have they? I mean, we've had an issue with that for years.
Yeah, we're still working on the PM 10 for the West Pinal, it's all in serious area. We submitted a plan to EPA to kind of work on the construction of Pinal County rules, and then the AgBMP rules that were sent in a package to EPA. They had some comments on the AgBMP, which is the Agricultural Best Management Practices, and they are, they partially approved and partially disapproved the reduction plan. They were, they had some comments on the AgBMP measures. They think it's not enforceable enough, and they want more stringent measures to come into place from that side. They have not commented on our side of the rules, so we don't know if they agree or not, but since they have partially disapproved on that, until that's been addressed, they can approve the entire plan, but we are working on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just expand?
Sure.
Just a little bit of that, and you please correct me if I'm wrong, but the significance of that statement, federal funding for transportation within the MAG region could be affected and could be reduced if we don't comply. And industries and businesses like TSMC and LG Energy Solutions could be restricted from expansion if they can't, if we're not in attainment and/or if they can't get credits and offset credits, and there are only so many offset credits that are even available to be gotten. So it's a significant impact if we can't come up with solutions and work with the EPA and have them be flexible with us as we go about that.
Okay. Well, any other comments during this public comment period? Public hearing portion of it? Okay, here you see none. I'll close the public hearing. And I don't know, we've lost the supervisor, but he'll be back. So, board's pleasure on item number 14.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve Resolution Number 031925-AQ as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Everybody's looking at me, I guess.
I have a motion and a second. Hall of favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Okay, thank you. 15, so now we're on 16. Decision of approval or disapproval of funding for the recommended increase in the Pinal County Health Benefit Package of 7%. Ms. Woods.
Hello again, Chairman Miller, members of board. Angie Woods, Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. Got it right that time. The agenda item before you this morning is a recommendation from the Pinal County Health Benefits Trust Board. It's to increase the medical and pharmacy and then vision plans as a result of information that they were presented during their trust board meetings in February, on February 4th and February 26th. During the February 4th meeting, trust board members approved a policy that established strategic priorities and parameters that guide the trust in establishing and maintaining fiscal responsibility and a financial stability reserve goal. Additionally, the trust board was presented with funding recommendations that were established by the county's contracted consultant for benefits, CBits. During the February 25th meeting, trust board members were presented with forecast information regarding these plans, and then funding options that would align with their financial strategy of the trust. After the discussion, trust board members voted and approved these recommended increases, 7% for contributions to the medical and pharmacy plan, and then a 4% increase in the contributions to the vision plan for the fiscal year 2526. The impact of the increases in contributions are expected to really cover anticipated increases in expenses for claims for the upcoming fiscal year. Anticipated increases are a result of historic claims payments and estimated increases in medical costs, so more like the inflationary costs associated to medical services. That inflationary cost that was built into the contribution increases about a 7.9% increase, that's what the industry is currently anticipating happening in the coming fiscal year. Additionally, trust board recommendation includes a very minor, a 0.14% of an increase so that they meet that, they begin to meet that financial stability strategy that was adopted. Their strategy, for your reference, is about a three-month or 30% reserve. The anticipated cost increase associated to the recommendation before you this morning will cost the county about $1.6 million if you choose, or what we have done in the past is the county has absorbed as much of that cost instead of passing that cost along to our employees. If we so choose to do so in the future, or this time around, that cost is about $1.2 million to our general fund and about $400,000 to special revenue funds. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Woods, on this?
Essentially, we're paying ourselves, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
We're just moving it from one pile to another pile?
Absolutely.
With no real, no real implication to the general fund?
I mean, it would move from the general fund to this Health Benefits Trust if at a point in the future, we, the general fund needed some of that reserve, we can always come back to you for some recommended changes. However, we also want to make sure that our Health Benefit Trust has stability and that it's sound, and that it has the ability to cover any anticipated costs for medical claims into the future.
So we're just transferring from one fund to another, though, just to make sure the reserve is the proper amount?
Absolutely.
That's really it?
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 16 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you.
You.
Okay, well, we're already having any sessions set up, so we will recess this board meeting and move back into each session. Then we'll come out and maybe do something. Okay, we get out of exec session?
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn executive session and reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
I have a second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Okay, brings us to item number 18, discussion of approval or disapproval of Strong Community Foundation of Arizona, blah, 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 Ninth Circuit Court. As read.
Is that yada, yada?
Yeah, yada, yada. Board's pleasure on 18.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 18 as hasn't been presented, but I have moved that we approve item 18.
Any other?
I move we discuss, Mr. Chair, thank you, let me rewind here. I move that we approve item 18 as discussed in executive session.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned.